This meeting of the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Prina.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Judd.
Here.
Banjer.
Here.
Diastis.
Yes, it's a new microphone.
Here.
With seven present and none absent, there is a quorum present this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel, which on a special note tonight, we're hoping is going out to everybody in a lot more clear visual fashion than it has for the past few years, a whole lot louder, so that you don't have to turn your TV up to about setting 52 to be able to hear us or anything else like that. This is the inaugural night of the new cameras, so there may be some bugs for us to work out, but we're hoping people are at least seeing and hearing us a lot better than they have. The first item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve the minutes of two different sets of council meeting minutes, one from the committee of the whole meeting last month and the other from the December 23rd council meeting. The chair would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider both sets of minutes as one motion. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it would be in order for a motion to approve both sets of minutes. Is there such a motion? Mr. Cannon has made the motion and it has been seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to either set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall both sets of minutes be approved? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and both sets of minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is probably what's going to take the bulk of tonight's meeting. We have a motion to deviate for six different purposes. We often maybe have one or two, but tonight there are six. And so, we have a recognition of Commander Tom Calcagno's service to the city. We have three swearings in of a commander and two sergeants, and two retirements to issue proclamations for. Therefore, is there a motion from the council to deviate from the usual agenda for those six purposes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made the motion and it has been seconded. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and will deviate from the agenda. So I'm going to grab this walking microphone and come around to the front. If it's on, it sounds like it's on. There we go. Chief, I would be very happy to have you join me. And as we walk forward, I would also like to ask all the family members of Commander Tom Calcagno to come forward, please. Mark, you better get up here with him. Come on, Mark. We have an unpleasant duty to do at the beginning of our pleasant ones. For those people who read the newspapers, for those people who maybe watched the last meeting of 2015 when it did -- well, you couldn't have because the cameras weren't on. But anybody who was here, we held a moment of silence for Tom at the beginning of the meeting, and we kind of had to wait for things to settle and the holidays to roll and have something made for the family. And so, I could give you the laundry list of things that Tom did as an officer. It's quite impressive. But I think the thing that speaks volumes about Tom's service is, take a look at this family up here. That was always what was most important for Tom. And I think if you know his story about how he was a cop in a town not too far away, and the family business needed his help, and the family's needs were calling, and Tom left the police force to go help his family. And then when they were able to get the business to a point where they were able to sell it, Tom said, "Can I go back?" And they were gracious enough to loan him to us a little while longer. Sergeant Mark Morosick is feeling the loss a little bit more than all of the guys in blue in the back, being a family member as well. That's why you have to come up here. And I may have to count on you. Without Tom around here anymore, I think Alderman Banjer might be the only one who gets my Star Trek jokes. So you can at least give me a polite smile and go, "Yeah, okay, I get it." So we did ask that all of you guys would come back because we did have a special plaque made in honor of Tom's service. Yeah, we're the functionaries of the city. Yeah, we're the people whose names are on the top of all the important stuff. But many of us knew Tom through his service, and we're feeling his loss with you. And so, we hope you will accept this token on behalf of the city of Rolling Meadows. Thank you for taking the time to come up today. With that task taken care of, I know I said we did this the last meeting in December, but I think at this time it would be appropriate again. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence in recognition of the memory of Thank you very much. Thankfully, there's a little bit of happier business to do today to kind of move along. And the first thing that we're going to do is bring in a new police commander. So I'm going to ask former sergeant, now Commander Tom Gdodamski, to come forward, please. As Tom comes forward, Tom also has a very impressive list of things that he's done while he's been here with the Rolling Meadows Police. And I always pick a couple of things. I think the most impressive one is that Tom has not only been able to serve on the MCAT team, which is the Major Crimes Assistance Team. This is when something big enough happens that communities go, "We need help," and they get help from all over the area. Tom has not only served on that team like people have, but he's also taken a leadership role in the MCAT team as well. And I think that's quite impressive. So since it's not as important that people hear my voice, they need to hear yours. Tom, I'm going to ask you to take this microphone in your left hand so that you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tom Gdodamski.
I, Tom Gdodamski.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Commander.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Commander.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all of the laws and ordinances.
And all the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And that I will perform the duties.
Of a Police Commander.
Of the Police Commander.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Commander.
Thank you, sir.
So now it's time to do the pinning. Tom, you said your wife is going to do that honor for you?
Yes.
All right. Rank has its privileges. Tom just gets to go first. So we have two sergeants this evening as well. The first is Mike Fior. Mike, if you would come forward, please. Among the things that Mike has done, I can personally vouch that he did some time on the bicycle because I did a night of it with him. He's also worked in the gangs unit. He has also been a part of the MCAT team, among other things. And as you look at this list, there's hardly anything Mike hasn't done. So Mike, I'm going to ask you to do the same thing that Tom did, please. Would you please take the microphone in your left hand so that you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Fior.
I, Mike Fior.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all of the laws and ordinances.
And all of the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And I will perform the duties.
Of a Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant.
Of a Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant. All right, time for Mike's pin. Badge. Boy, I shouldn't call it a pin. I should call it a badge. There we go. Congratulations. Now, in my defense, when the mayor and the alderman get sworn in, we get pins because they used to give us badges, and they took those badges away from us from mayors and aldermen doing bad behavior with their badges. So I should remember to switch to badges when we talk about guys like the police department. The other police sergeant who's going to be sworn in tonight is Matt Weigland. Matt, would you come forward, please? Among the things that Matt's done while he's been here has been a field training officer. And if you're not familiar what that is, that means this guy's good enough to show other people how we want it done. And so, when you're a teacher like me, that kind of ability is particularly appreciated and impressive. So Matt, if you would do me the favor of doing just what these other gentlemen have done, please take this in your left hand so that you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Matt Weigland.
I, Matt Weigland.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all of the laws and ordinances.
And all the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And I will perform the duties.
Of the office of a Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant.
The office of a Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir.
And now for pinning Matt's badge. Next up, we have two retirement proclamations to do. The first one on the list is Bob Hartnett from the Public Works Department. Bob, would you come forward, please? And Lynn, too. Good. As Bob comes forward, if John Fries weren't here in the room, I could say I've known Bob longer than anybody in the city system. And to include John is kind of cheating. So pretty much, I knew Bob since before I ever was a citizen of Rolling Meadows. He's one of the people who can say he's been to both of my weddings. How about that? So it goes back quite a long ways. And I can tell you from being somebody who just knew Bob through the family that the amount of knowledge this guy has about anything with working parts, anything that involves tools and all the rest, is truly impressive. Bob's been here for 38 years, so as far back as I go, it doesn't even touch how long he's been working for the city of Rolling Meadows. And so, we have this proclamation up here that ends by saying, "Now therefore, I, Mayor Tom Rooney of the city of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 14th, 2015, as Bob Hartnett Day in the city of Rolling Meadows. The entire city council and I, on behalf of the staff, citizens, and businesses of Rolling Meadows, thank Bob Hartnett for his 38 years of service, loyalty, and dedication to our community. He will be missed by all and is wished a great retirement, health, and happiness." Bob, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, sir.
And Matt, who took the picture, is not just son, but dad of the grandbaby. So that's pretty good stuff, too. And then the final of the six items of businesses I was referring to before is the retirement of Dave Carlson. Sergeant Carlson, would you come forward, please? Now, while Dave comes forward, and we have his proclamation up here to pass across as well, I think that since I've been mayor, this is the second time I've had to be involved in the retirement of a Carlson because I think I remember writing a letter when your mom retired from Willow Bend. Would that be right?
From Rolling Meadows High School.
Oh, from Rolling Meadows High School. Got it. Okay, fair enough. I knew it was one of the schools. So they're just retiring all over the place. We could mention to your mom that we didn't know she was so young. How about that?
There you go.
Well, as we go through the different things that Dave has done, I'm just going to kind of step in here and say, "I'm sure I'm dating myself when I talk about the old Officer Friendly program." I'm pretty sure Officer Friendly got replaced years ago by Dare and all that other kind of stuff. But if you're going to find somebody in the police force that you can label Officer Friendly, it's Dave, I think. I got to spend a ride along with Dave in the winter a number of years ago, and just the genial smile that this guy offers to everybody, no matter the circumstance, he brings a calming influence to every situation I've ever seen involved him in. If you need a poster child for Officer Friendly, I believe it's Dave Carlson. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tom Rooney of the city of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim Friday, January 16th, 2015, as David Carlson Day in the city of Rolling Meadows. The entire city council and I, on behalf of the staff, citizens, and businesses of Rolling Meadows, thank Dave Carlson for his 28 years of service, loyalty, and dedication to our community. He will be missed by all and is wished a great retirement, health, and happiness. Now, for all the people who were kind enough to come out for these festivities tonight, we do not punish you by making you stay for any more of the meeting if you don't want to. So at this point, we allow time for people who want to leave to leave because that lets anybody who wants any additional picture opportunities right up here in front of the city seal or whatever else, please feel free to come and take whatever pictures you like. We'll reconvene the meeting in about five minutes.
Again.
I pulled it up before.
Well, I guess I'll take it and pull it up there. Let's do that. I'm alone. No curves.
We'll bring the session back to order by proceeding with our agenda through the reports. Under the mayor's report, I just have one quick item. January 1st brought along the next six-month period. That means we're rotating the mayor pro tem duty around the council. Alderman Baner, I thank you for serving for the last six months. That means Alderman Diastis, you'll be for the next six months. And so, in that spirit, I know of two teaching duties for me this particular spring that will not make me miss any council meetings, but will probably make me arrive a little late. One goes until 7:00, and the other goes until 7:30, and you do have to obey traffic laws on the way here. So Alderman Diastis, I do know of the first meeting in February and the first meeting in March, where you may be calling things to order and holding the fort down until I get here.
My pleasure.
That's the mayor's report for this evening. Are there ward reports? Mr. Prina of the second ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had several calls in the last week because we've had power outages in my ward specifically along Adams and Hick Street. And I believe that I made some calls, and Fred was able to get some answers from Commonwealth Edison about what's happening. So I just want the residents to know that we've been working on it, and hopefully we can resolve it.
Further ward reports this evening. Then seeing none, the council is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. We do have four signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening. The first one is Mr. Jesus Serrato. Mr. Serrato, you're recognized at the microphone, sir, for a time not to exceed five minutes. The floor is yours.
Jesus Serrato. I'm at 3804 Fessent Drive in Rowley Meadows. My business location is 244 West Northwest Highway in Palatine. I'm here to talk about a 3251 Brockway Street. It's going to be orange red later today on the first meeting. We have a couple of things in this home that the homeowners here, we've been working with her for about a year trying to get this approved, we've been in permit, and there's an issue with improvements on the road. Unfortunately, when this community right across from this lot was developed, which is a margate drive, they extended the driveway, the right-of-way, which reduced the right-of-way on that specific lot to, I believe, 50 feet from 66 feet. So even if we were to put in improvements, there's no room for the improvements to go in. It's the last lot on the whole community to be developed, and there's no curves, nor gutters, nor services through the whole street. We're willing to participate when the city decides to go through and make the improvements, but in the meantime, we asked for a variance about a month and a half ago, and we got a preliminary approval from the board before this board. And I was asked to stop by today because we want to make sure that we get that variance approved as it was approved to us in the past. That's basically why I'm here.
Thank you for taking the time to make those thoughts known, sir.
Thank you.
The next person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Steve Hollish. Mr. Hollish, the floor is yours for a time not to exceed five minutes, sir.
Hey there. You don't want my name or anything, or just, you've got it.
That's why we do the sign-in sheet. You may just start.
Okay. I just have the question regarding the Ark Church that's under advisement for tonight. I understand, went through the planning commission, and they all looked at it and said, you know, it's fine, it passes. But there's a few things that weren't in that information, is what does this church actually do? How big is it? How big is it going to expand to? And I feel that putting a church in a commercial environment isn't the best situation in the world. I feel that that area isn't really got enough area to support a big church. The meeting room alone is adequate for their usage, but if they ever expand, it's going to create a nightmare on that street for parking and everything else. And I understand it's only going to be there for Sunday a short time, and then two nights a week. But even two nights a week for a commercial building seems kind of like strange. So I don't know if anybody else on the council knows anything about this church, what they are, what their background is, because that wasn't in the planning commission documentation. So I just thought I'd be aware that maybe we need a little bit more information on what this church does and going forward, what else is it going to be done with it? So that's all I'd say about that.
Thank you for taking the time, sir. The third person on the sign-in sheet is Ms. Lynn Griesmeyer. I hope I said that correctly.
Yes.
Ms. Griesmeyer, the floor is yours for a time not to exceed five minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I was wondering, I have some, a handout for everybody. I don't know, is that...
If you'd like.
Allowed?
Certainly. You can bring it to either end, and we can just pass it down the rows if you'd like.
Okay. My suggestion is a proposal for the vacant shopping center formerly occupied by Dominix. I suggest that we set up the shopping center as a mini-marketplace that's intended to contain many small businesses and segmented retail spaces. And post this information in the City of Rowley Meadows website, and inviting small businesses to service, to sell their service and products, or advertise at the marquee that's out in front of this building, or advertise in a local newspaper. And suggested retailers might be a shipping company such as Federal Express, offering packaging and shipping, selling postage, an attorney, an accountant, a tax preparer, handyman conglomerate, providing carpeting, plumbing, electrical services, household cleaning, senior caregivers. And maybe at the far east of that building, have a teen or a kid zone, like what we used to have here in Rowley Meadows that was called something like Tunnels of Fun, and that would be for after-school and weekend indoor play activities for the youth. The incentive for these small businesses would be no taxes for two years, allowing the businesses to establish clientele. Other Rowley Meadows retailers may ask why the mini-market businesses have two years of tax-free option, and then the substantiation would be that the mini-marketplace businesses are sharing other spaces and don't have any definite walled-off, sectioned office areas. And a different item would be, if I recall right, the retailers in Rowley Meadows are charged a music tax, is that correct? Where they, like restaurants and such, are charged money to play music. I was told this at one time. I don't know if that's still in force, but if it is, I would recommend abolishing that. Give something back to these businesses that have put their trust in Rowley Meadows, the town chosen to establish the business. And for considering both of these suggestions, thank you very much. The mini-marketplace would vitalize a prime traffic area of Rowley Meadows, which would bring more jobs to Rowley Meadows. Revenue from outsiders of Rowley Meadows could be expected, and the mini-marketplace offers our residents here more options to keep them doing business in their hometown. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Ms. Griesmeyer, before you leave the microphone, could I ask your permission? We certainly appreciate the time and thought that you've put into this. We do have fairly regular contact with the private owners of the property. May we have your permission to make a copy of one of these sheets and pass it along to them?
Definitely.
All right. With your permission, thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.
Then the fourth signatory on the sign-in sheet tonight is Mr. Richard Williams, also about the Ark Church. Mr. Williams, the floor is yours for a time not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening. No, no, it was just, I'm representing Ark Church International.
Oh.
I put my name down just to say that I'm here.
Fair enough. Okay, deal. Thank you very much, sir. Those are the people who are on the sign-in sheet this evening. Therefore, the floor is now closed to public comment, and the council will proceed with its business. There are no motions in this evening for second readings, as in the last meeting of the last year, I guess is the way to phrase it. We had no items in for first reading, so therefore, tonight, we're in that same position where there's only items in for one reading, and in this case, it's the first one. There are four items in for first reading, and it's the council's general practice to do a consent agenda for first readings. Is there anyone who would object to any of these items being on the consent agenda for ordinances and first readings? Mr. Judd.
Charlie.
Item C is removed. Further items to be removed from the consent agenda for ordinances? Mr. Cannon.
B and D.
Then we have no consent agenda, so we'll go through each one in turn. Item A is an ordinance that if it's approved, would approve a special use and variation to allow a place of worship at 4801 Emerson Avenue in Palatine. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance for first reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion on this particular item, the question is, shall the item be moved forward by the clerk for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The next item is item B. This ordinance have approved would approve various variations to subdivision regulations for required improvements at 3251 Brockway Street. This is the item that Mr. Serrato was referring to. Mr. Cannon, excuse me, is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Diastis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you asked that this item be pulled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure, I'm for giving the petitioner his ordinance. I just have some concerns going forward to make sure that we have ourselves in a financial position. We've had, we had a problem in the not-too-distant past on that street with a home that was being built, and I just want to make sure, as a city, we're covered when construction work is done there, especially with sewer and water going outside of his own property. So I'm probably being overreactive, but I just want to make sure that we have protection.
Fair enough. I'm, quite frankly, not sure how to answer that. I'm not really sure what we're referring to, but might somebody on staff be able to address all of them?
Well, my concern exactly is that, you know, in this particular property, but it's not just about this property, but this property, they have to go across the street to get the water and sewer, they have to break up a driveway, they have to break up our street, and I understand that that's not a problem. I'm not, I want to make sure we have enough money in case something goes wrong, that we're covered, because the driveway needs to be replaced, the street needs to be replaced, and then at the end, we're going to have to repair the street on the sides. So I just want to make sure there's enough bond money, or however we go about doing that, to make sure our position is covered, so we don't run into a legal issue down the line, like we did on a house on that block already.
Okay. Mr. Vogt, I see you reaching for the microphone. Would you care to comment, sir?
Yeah, and between myself and the state or community development, that requirement would be met in terms of what they're required to put up, in terms of the bonds for the construction, that is, utility extensions just to serve their house. It is a little bit different than the location where Alderman Cannon is referring to, where there were public improvements, and that made it more complex a couple of years ago. This, I don't expect, has any public improvements. It's simply the routine through the community development for the individual connections, so, but yeah, we're on that in terms of making sure that we've got the proper guarantees.
Mr. Cannon, is that sufficiently addressed?
That's great, thank you. And I'm for this, I'm all for this.
Fair enough. Seeing no further discussion, the chair has a quick thought. Those who might have perused their email earlier today, I don't believe there's any intention to ever pass new regulations while a development is underway, and then therefore make those people subject to those requirements. If you go back and look at the minutes from the committee, the whole meeting, I do believe it's open to interpretation. The discussion was about general regulations, not about a particular piece of property. But as Mr. Serrato had mentioned, it could sort of be open to interpretation as to whether this would apply to, whether item D would apply to this particular property or not. The city manager and I have had discussions in that the ruling would be that it doesn't, but if the council is interested in tidying things up, Mr. McCall did suggest that if we simply make an amendment to strike Section 2 of this ordinance, it would take any gray area away, and so rather than just relying on rulings, it might be better if things were airtight. So I'd like to start by asking for unanimous consent to make such an amendment. Does anybody on the council object to making an amendment for that purpose? Then seeing none, it is so ordered, and the ordinance is amended on first reading to strike the section, to make it clear that item D, when it comes, oh, we have to amend item D, not this one, correct? Okay, but it's not this particular item. Oh, we do. It is, okay. All of a sudden, I confused myself. Sorry about that. Then therefore, with no objection from the council, this item is amended, and the amended version will be brought forward for second reading. Fair enough. Okay, then now we're clear. Is there any further discussion on this item? Then the question is, shall the item be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The final item in for first reading is item D. Item D, if adopted, would amend Chapter 98 for subdivisions that would require a deposit with the city for public improvements for a development or a subdivision of a single lot, in the event that the city council determines to grant the owner a variance from the requirements that the owner install the public improvements as required by the Code of Ordinances. This is the item that was being made reference to under item B. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you asked that this be pulled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
I really don't need to make any further comments. My other comments kind of covered this also.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Is there further discussion of the ordinance? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The final item in for first reading is item D. Item D, if adopted, would amend Chapter 98 for subdivisions that would require a deposit with the city for public improvements for a development or a subdivision of a single lot, in the event that the city council determines to grant the owner a variance from the requirements that the owner install the public improvements as required by the Code of Ordinances. This is the item that was being made reference to under item B. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you asked that this be pulled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
I really don't need to make any further comments. My other comments kind of covered this also.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Is there further discussion of the ordinance? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this ordinance forward for second reading. That concludes all of the items that are in for first reading this evening, bringing the council to the warrant, the document that releases all funds for expenses incurred from December 17th of last year through January 6th of this year. The amount in the warrant is roughly $3.25 million, one-third of which is related to personnel, and the unusually high dollar amount is because of a debt service payment that comes annually. Is there a motion to approve the warrant as prepared by the finance department? Mr. Cannon has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion of the warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. That brings the council to the second consent agenda for the evening, the consent agenda for resolutions. It contains five items, items F through J. Would any alderman like any of those items removed from the consent agenda for resolutions? Then seeing none, the chair asks unanimous consent to consider all five resolutions in one motion. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it is so ordered, and it is therefore in order for a motion to approve all five resolutions.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. The question is, shall all five resolutions be adopted? Item F would approve the purchase of two police squad cars. Item G would award a contract for the city's grant consultant for the year 2015. Item H would award a contract for parkway tree removals, also for 2015. Item I would award a contract for annual traffic signal maintenance. And item J would approve the bi-annual Illinois Department of Transportation Hold Harmless Agreement for working in the right-of-way when the city has to do so. The question is, shall all five of those resolutions be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those five resolutions are adopted. I have no appointments this evening, although I'm hoping to be able to make an appointment to the ZBA at the next meeting, and the proclamations for this evening were already done at the part of our opening festivities. Does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
There's no report. Therefore, the city staff reports, it's kind of light tonight, we like that. Number one, community items of interest, Mr. Crumstock.
Plus, I have add-ons. Obviously, the first one is, this Friday is the last time that we will be collecting Christmas tree disposal, so obviously, please have it out at the parkway, so we can take care of those. And again, the trees should be at the curb, cut end, facing the street. City Hall will be closed this Monday coming up, that would be Monday, January 19th, in obviously recognition and the holiday of Martin Luther King Jr., and obviously, the next part is for January 20th, there's a flyer going out for the Oak Avenue area, but on January 20th at 6:00 PM to about 7:30 PM, other than staff has to get back here by 7:30. At the Rowley Meadows High School, we will be having a informational meeting about a new bus lane in that area. So again, the Waverly Park area should have already received their notice. If you have not, please contact us over here at City Hall. Obviously, the city in Swink still have the Elgin Recycling Program going on here for the lights that goes until February 13th. The last one on the sheet before I add actually is, have you visited the museum lately? They did have an open house this Sunday, but again, they are still set up for the holidays, and again, they are 3100 Central Road. Really quickly, just an add-on, too, actually, for people at home on Comcast, we will contact Comcast. It seems that their system is not doing so well with our new system, but the while system looks like it's doing okay, but we are still tweaking as we go. So people at Comcast, we will be contacting you. The second part is that we actually have a flyer out for the 60th birthday celebration. It's a custom street light banner program that we actually have. We have an order form that's actually out at this point in time, and we are actually taking orders until February 5th, 2015. Please see City Hall, and we do have some of them throughout the area. And again, we do have these throughout the area that we're distributing. And obviously, the other comment that I have is, please contact, obviously, City Hall for additional comments about items coming up for the 60th anniversary. I know the ad hoc committee is working very diligently for Thursday, February 26th, starting at 6:30 PM, and that's your promo on that one.
Society, as they do every year, did a wonderful job of dressing the place up for the holidays. I believe that both Mr. Vogt and I left with far more cookies than either of us really should be eating, but I had boys to help me out, and that always makes things a little bit nicer. Then next would be the purchase order disclosures, over $2,500. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are only three, and just for review, no other comments. Thank you.
Then the final item under staff reports this evening is the committee of the whole agenda for next week. Mr. Crumstock?
Right now, what we have are six that are designated and actually almost completed or completed, to the point that they could be on the committee of the hall. 2991 Brockway sanitary sewer recapture request, that's something that we've talked about in the past, but it's back now for some additional discussion. Was a little alluded to earlier tonight. Number two is the council role with staff work, and obviously, Mayor Rooney is doing that. Then we have number three, entry management professionals. Number four, the 2015 vehicle replacement schedule, what is actually in the budget and how we're actually working on that. Number five is the business and commercial vehicles in residential areas. That's an item that staff has been working on. Obviously, we have certain residents that, this comes up numerous times. We like to obviously work on additional police item on this one, too, and for the last probably year, year and a half, it's been a little more prevalent in Ward III, so that hopefully, this ordinance, when we discuss it, will take care of some of that and give us some backbone on some stuff. Number six is also old public works. It's projected for CDBG work, and obviously, next city council meeting, which would be January 27th, we will be doing our annual call for projects, but we wanted to discuss this project before. There are two other items that are not complete at this point in time that I feel comfortable with, but if for some strange reason they are complete, they would be added, but at this point, I do not have any reason to think that I'm typing that quickly, or the official documentation would be completed by our Thursday deadline.
So then perhaps, because Friday is really the deadline, this could have one or two more items by Friday?
Potentially, but as I said, six are I'm really comfortable with.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Then that concludes the staff reports for this evening. Are there matters not in the agenda this evening? Mr. Diastis?
Yes, I have a question that I probably don't expect to be answered this evening, but maybe could be answered with a staff report. Brockway Street has come up tonight, and on first ordinance has been passed, no sidewalks and curbs and... So I guess my question is, and again, this, the issue with Brockway had triggered it. We've waived it. We've grandfathered it in, so they're not going to be paying any money to the city. If in the future, the residents of that street come to the city and say, we would like to have curbs and sidewalks, does the city have to do this, or is this an assessment that we would put on them? And it's not just relates to Brockway, but to any area of the city that we say, okay, because of the nature of the development and it's the rural setting and blah, blah, blah that we've heard, but now, 10 years from now, you have all new people who don't want the rural setting anymore and say, I'd like to have sidewalks and curbs, but we have no money for many of them. So I guess the question is, do we as a city have a financial liability to do that, even though those residents haven't put forth anything? Or is that something that would be assessed to those people at that point in time? Again, it's not a question for now. It could be answered by a report. It's not in the immediate future, but just something to settle my mind, because I don't mind saying, fine, you don't have to have a sidewalk or a curb, and you don't have to give us any money, but I'm hoping that whoever lives in that house 10, or 15, or 20 years from now doesn't come to this thing and say, well, I've got little kids. Now I want a sidewalk, and now I want a curb. And now I expect you to pay for it, because I've been paying taxes for 15 years. So it's kind of a staff question that, you know, at your leisure, you know, a couple, three months, pump an answer.
There are a couple of things I think we can point out. The question, the way you phrased it, the city council is not under any obligation to go forth and put things forward if people say, we want this on our street. That's something that comes from staff and so forth and so on. The particular issue that we were discussing tonight, curb and gutter is considered a roadway thing, and sidewalk is considered different. As the plan commission reviewed this, the plan commission said, even if you wanted to do that here, you couldn't. So we think that's off the table, because you're not going to be able to do those things.
Right.
But to go beyond that, I agree. I think that kind of hits the limits of my knowledge, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so the rest of it could be answered sometime at leisure with a staff report.
Exactly. I mean, because what if the whole street decides, we want to do this, but we've already, over the course of the last 10 or 15 years, said, we've given you what you wanted, you haven't put up any money for it, and now you're coming back to a thing you want. I'm not citing one particular home. I'm saying, if there's a whole street that's been done like this, like, is the case on Brockway? And it doesn't have to be Brockway. It could be any street that we've said, okay, you like the rural feel, but now 20 years from now, you want, you don't want the rural feel anymore. What's our, where do we stand with all of that? I mean, I think I know, but I'd rather get staff opinions.
And I do believe that item D that we put forward for second reading tonight, probably
Moving ahead.
addresses maybe 75% of that as well. So maybe some of the answers that Mr. Diastis is looking for could be snuck into the council action summary two weeks from tonight to maybe help clarify.
Again, there's no hurry to it, just, the whole thing just kind of raised the questions.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other matters not in the agenda. Mr. Cannon, from the first word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two things. First of all, first question I had is, for the last few weeks, our cow agenda was supposed to have a discussion about fire stations, and all of a sudden, it got moved. And I was wondering why it got moved.
Well, I suspect that that's what Mr. Crumstock was alluding to earlier, because you're right.
I didn't know if it was or not.
It was scheduled for January.
Yes.
And it's not here now. I'm assuming that's one of the things that you were referring to, that you're not sure is going to be ready for the meeting.
Yes, and that's, I didn't want to put something out there that I didn't feel comfortable with, and that's one thing that, as you know, we prefer that it's all written correctly, and it's a little more polished before we actually just put something out there, and then we start a conversation, and it gets muddied water.
So is that going to be a proposal, or is that, we're just going to have a discussion?
It's going to be more of a discussion from some of the past discussions that we had, and then some of the additional information that has been accumulated since our last discussion, so...
So can we be assured it'll be on the February one?
It's on February on my Friday letter, so we really are pushing for that one, too. And obviously, Fr. Chief Franz Groth has given out a booklet of some other fire stations and some other items, but again, until it really felt comfortable with, I didn't want to put that right in at that point in time.
Okay.
And if I may, before the second point, is that what you were referring to, that it is still possible, that if, if people get the tidiness that you want sufficiently, that it could still be here for next week?
Yes.
Because I know a number of people around the community are hoping to find out what's going to happen with that, so...
Right.
Duly noted, Mr. Cannon. You said you had two items.
Oh, yes. The other one I had, and I might be a little bit premature, but I'll give it a shot anyhow. You know, now we have our new technical equipment onboard, and we're using it. A couple of things, I don't know if we need to have a discussion about this, or if we can declare it, but, you know, District 15, the school district that most of us, I had our kids go to, broadcast all of their meetings, and it's available on tape. So I was wondering if there's somehow, we could get that on our system and rerun those during the, sometime during the month.
That is planned. We have had discussion with them. We actually still get the tapes on it. They've always given us VHS tapes, and typically, it's Monday at 3:00 PM. Don't quote me on that, but it is on Mondays that we've been running it. The last few tapes that they actually gave us actually ripped one of our VHS recorders, so we told them, at this point in time, we're going to wait for the new system, and Justin's in the E.V. room, but we are going to be getting DVDs, and I think, if I remember correctly, next week, I think is the next one that we're going to get, but it will be part of our regular schedule once we actually get their DVDs.
You know, run a couple times during the week.
Right now...
Eventually, I know you can't do it right now.
Eventually, as we've been trying to deal with it, the idea is, now that it's a smarter system, that we can load more on it, it's all part of the programming that we're going to try, so it will run more than just once, but at the same point in time, making sure how the priorities are and everything else, because we've also had the discussion about, we've always had a character generator, so, but also periodically, we get informational DVDs and fire safety DVDs, and also start programming some of those things. So it is a real educational channel six, not just little pieces, but we've had those communications, and part of it is, when we were recording on VHS, our tapes were much superior to theirs, and I don't want to put them under the bus, but a few times, some of our service calls and stuff that we've had to send out have been attributed to their tapes, so...
Does 214 broadcast their meetings?
214, we've really not had communications with, but they do have a communication piece, so we'll communicate to them once the system is up and running.
Because 211 does not. They're kind of gutless. They don't publish their, they don't, they don't broadcast their things. They want to hide.
Well, they're minutes, but, but yes.
But they don't broadcast anything.
Right, but well, when the system is obviously up and running, obviously, today was our test, and obviously, as I said before, Comcast, we know that we have an issue with, with WOW, but again, each of the pieces, they literally just did training Thursday, Friday, and Monday, so we're still tweaking it, and obviously, AVI is in the room, too, so...
And the last one is, how about the Cook County meetings? Cook County commissioners? They're all broadcasters.
Cook County has their own station.
Well, they're on, they're on public broadcasting sometimes, but could we get their tapes? I mean, I think it would be helpful for our residents to at least have the access to it.
Yeah, we could communicate to them and see if they can provide that, but let me reach out to them and see what they have, because, A, if they're recording it, let me see how they're recording it, too.
Yeah, they're recording. I see, they're on channel, they're on TV, but you don't seem to know.
19, but don't quote me on that.
So I know this is not a rush thing. I just, but I think this, you know, whatever we can do.
Yeah, we can communicate to them. We've never really had real communication.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks.
Those are fine suggestions. Thank you, sir. Other matters not on the agenda. Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping you could take a minute and just kind of give some clarity to me and any, the rest of the council on closed session meetings. I had requested a closed session for personnel back in December, and was under the impression, based on comments I made at the time, that that would be occurring. I was unaware of any specific requirements or specific details that needed to be provided anywhere along the line. I know you and I exchanged a couple of brief emails, and, you know, I was under the impression it was going to take place tonight, so I was just wondering if you could, you know, provide for the rest of the council, you know, what those requirements and/or specific details might need to be, number one. Number two, when would, right, we simply expect to be notified that the, that their request has not either been approved or has been denied, however you want to, however you want to state it?
Well, there's no approval or denying. Somebody simply meets, needs to make a proposal, but no proposal was made, even when I asked for one, and so as soon as you're willing to make one, we'll be very happy to put it on a closed session agenda, but the, the very basic requirement is that there has to be a proposal, and there's no proposal.
Could you help me understand, because I said I was interested in a closed session about personnel, and didn't go into any specific details. I'm saying, I don't know what needs to be specifically, what specific requirement, proposal here.
You simply have to be forthcoming about what you'd like to discuss. That's all there is to it. There's no special magical requirement. There's just a level of cooperation that's necessary in letting everybody know what's going to be discussed. I did not feel that threshold was met, and so therefore, I instructed the city clerk that the threshold was not met, and it was not put on, but it's in her, her file, that as soon as she's given the go, that we know what we're talking about, it will be placed on the agenda.
Okay, and those emails that we exchanged did not do that?
No, they did not.
Okay. If you can provide, you know, a little bit more clarity as to exactly what needs to be done, I'd be happy to move forward as well.